All right, I'd like to call to order the November 27th, 2023 Mount Lake Terrace Planning Commission meeting to order. Would you please take the roll?
Chair Batista?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Landis?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Commissioners Denson?
Here.
Commissioner Betcher is excused for tonight's meeting.
And we have one attending remotely?
Yes.
All right. Can we solve the echo before we proceed? Thanks. Check, check.
Testing.
All right. And then do we need to have the remote commissioner do the, how we used to do with Zoom, when we were all Zoom, attending remotely via teleconference statement?
We don't have to go through the whole diatribe like we used to, just attending remotely.
Awesome. All right. I can see them on the screen, so we're good. Okay. Item number three, approval of the November 13th, 2023 minutes. Does anybody have any changes or corrections? I am not hearing or seeing. And no indication online, so we'll go ahead and declare those accepted as presented. Item number four, public comment. Do we have any public this evening that would like to make comment for anything that is not on tonight's agenda?
There's no one here in the audience.
All right. So we'll go ahead and move on to item number five then. Public hearing for designated zoning of property 4713 240th Street Southwest.
All right. Hello, everyone. I'm waiting for my screen to match the screen. Let's see. Maybe I will do the PDF. I didn't want to scroll. One moment. Why does it do it? There we go. All right. Hello, everyone. My name is Sarah Pizzo. I'm associate planner here, and I will be going over the zoning for the annexation area located at 4713 240th Street Southwest. All right. So the purpose is to discuss the zoning designation for this annexation area. This land is currently in the process of being annexed into the city of Mount Lake Terrace. It's currently in unincorporated Snohomish County, and so the Planning Commission is required to make a recommendation to City Council regarding the zoning designation of this area. So I'm going to go over some background information tonight. The annexation process overview, discuss our comprehensive plan and how that relates, discuss the adjacent zoning to our annexation area, make the request to Planning Commission, present next steps, and then we'll have an opportunity for questions and answers. Right. So some background information. This property, like I said, is located in unincorporated Snohomish County. It's about 0.44 acres. It's located north of 240th Street Southwest and east of 48th Avenue West. And the reason the property owners would like to annex into the city of Mount Lake Terrace is because they have an outdated septic system, and they would like to receive city sewer According to our comprehensive plan, in order to receive sewer services, the property needs to annex into the city or enter an annexation agreement. Our comprehensive plan does identify this area as one of the unincorporated islands as a potential area of annexation, so this is very much in line with our comprehensive plan. We are, I'd like to say, a little bit more than halfway through the annexation process, so we have been notified by the property owner that they would like to annex into the city. We had a City Council public meeting to consider their request, and Council approved a petition to be circulated, and the petition was signed by the property owners and sent to the Snohomish County Assessor Office, where it received a certification of sufficiency. And then the City Council held a public hearing on this petition and approved a resolution declaring a notice of intent to annex. And now we are at the sixth step, so the Planning Commission work session, we have previously had, and this is the public hearing, to assign a zoning designation to the annexation area. The notice of intent was sent to the Boundary Review Board with the Snohomish County, and that is currently under review. The City Council will hold a work session and a public hearing on both the annexation ordinance and the zoning ordinance, and then, once approved, the certified ordinances will be sent to the county, the Office of Financial Management, and city departments, and they'll be welcomed into the city of Mount Lake Terrace. So with regard to land use, our comprehensive plan shows this property as urban low residential land designation. That's the darker yellow shown there and zoomed up of the property in question for annexation. So urban low residential classifications, primary land use, is single-family residential. So here's an image of the property shown without a zoning designation, since it's not in the city of Mount Lake Terrace yet, and we are proposing RS 8400 as the zoning designation, and you can see that it's surrounded by the zone on all sides. The minimum lot size for RS 8400 is 8,400 square feet, and this property is 18,761 square feet, so it meets the minimum square footage to be zoned RS 8400. With regards to SEPA, the Snohomish County zoning designation is R 8400, single-family residential, and we are proposing Mount Lake Terrace's equivalent, single-household residential RS 8400. The city determined, or issued a determination of nonsignificance on November 1st, and we have not received any agency or public comments on this proposal, and adopting this zoning is not expected to result in any indirect or direct environmental impacts. So for these reasons, the staff would recommend that Planning Commission provide a recommendation to City Council to zone this annexation area as RS 8400. And this is what the zoning map will look like if that is recommended and ultimately approved by City Council. So the next steps would be, after the Boundary Review Board action, the City Council will hold a public hearing, taking into consideration the Planning Commission's zoning designation recommendation, and then adopting the zoning and the annexation ordinances at the same time. And now we have time for a discussion and questions and public comment.
Does anybody have questions for staff? I know this is the second time we've seen this, so I think most of the questions that we had were answered previously, but just wanted to double-check. All right. Not seeing any indication that we have any additional questions for staff. Public comment would be reserved during the public hearing, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I think the next step then would be we'd need to open the public hearing. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Make a motion that we open the public hearing?
I have a motion to open the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. The public hearing is now open. And then for staff, was there any written testimony that was submitted for this public hearing?
No written testimony has been received.
All right. So there was no written testimony, so we'll go ahead and see if there's anybody in the public that'd like to speak on this matter tonight.
We first have up Josh Bashe to speak for the Forest Crest Athletic Club.
Is that for this annexation or for the next item on the agenda?
No.
No.
That's the next item.
We now have up Gerard Bucklin, speaking from Bellevue. No? Okay. My apologies. There is no one here for public comment for the public hearing.
Okay. So there is no public comment for the public hearing. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
I have a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. All right. So I think that was the quickest public hearing we've ever had. So we'll go ahead and move on to item number six. Second review of the zoning text amendment for private recreation facilities, MTMC 19.15.190 and 19.23 and 19.30 and 19.135.060.
All right. Hello again. So I'll be going over the zoning text amendment for the second Planning Commission work session. All right. So I'm going to start by recapping briefly the November 13th meeting and then providing mostly new information in response to the Planning Commission's request, so that includes some visual examples of private recreation facilities and single household districts, some general information about parking and traffic, and then discuss the comparison cities and their criteria, and also go into a little bit more about conditional use permits, and then I will provide a recommendation, give Planning Commission some options to consider, discuss next steps, and then we'll have time again for discussion and questions. All right. So to recap the last Planning Commission work session, we discussed what a zoning text amendment is, which is essentially a change to the zoning code or development regulations. We received a proposal to allow private recreation facilities in our single household zones through a conditional use permit, given that specific criteria is met. Our applicant is Tom Anderson on behalf of the Forest Crest Athletic Club, which is currently a non-conforming use with non-conforming structures and improvements. However, this proposal is not site-specific and has broader implications for the entire city. The city issued a determination of nonsignificance at the end of October, and no comments have been received. The proposal was sent to the Department of Commerce for the 60-day review, which ends November, I'm sorry, December 4th this year, and then Planning Commission is tasked with making a recommendation on this proposal and forwarding it to City Council for a decision. And then recapping high-level comprehensive plan, recreation, park, and open space plan and zoning and how that relates to this proposal. So the primary land use in urban low residential is single-family residential land uses per our comprehensive plan. Our comprehensive plan identifies a need to increase housing opportunities to meet our population growth projections. We need to encourage new development to be compatible with surrounding neighborhoods. The plan also identifies a high demand for recreation opportunities, and this is increasing with population growth. Partnering with local businesses, nonprofits, and others to help meet this demand is one strategy our comprehensive plan and our RPOS plan identifies. That's the Recreation Park and Open Space Plan. And then our zoning code says that single-family zones or the RS zones are to provide land for single household residences primarily, but also other compatible use or complementary uses. And this is a map I showed at our last meeting that shows which properties could, if this code amendment passed, could propose private recreation facilities in Mount Lake Terrace because they meet the criteria that's proposed by the applicant. Oops. There was actually four properties. There was one that was identified upon further analysis, but I will say that a lot of these have limitations due to, one, being publicly owned, and a couple containing critical areas. So it really is the two properties that would currently be eligible should this amendment pass. However, if single household residences went through lot consolidation processes, these are then all the properties that could potentially have private recreation facilities on them if the proposed code passed. So just so you have an idea of the scale that would be impacted, those are the properties with the hatched lines. All right. So I also wanted to kind of clarify and dig deeper into recreation facilities in Mount Lake Terrace, where we currently allow them, and what we currently allow in our single-family residential zones or single-household residential zones. So we do allow publicly-owned recreation facilities as a permitted use in our RS zones, and then I discussed membership organizations last time, as these are allowed by conditional use permit, but I wanted to clarify that clubs and lodges are only allowed for administrative purposes and meetings. So this isn't an active athletic club, for example, which is why the applicant is proposing making that change because we don't currently allow that. And then, so where do we allow privately-owned recreation facilities in Mount Lake Terrace? There are seven zones in the city that do currently allow this. That would be our Community Business District, our General Commercial District, Town Center, Freeway Tours District, Light Industry and Office Park District, our Special Development District, and our Recreation and Park District. And the city's Recreation Pavilion is located in a rec zone. Now we're actually going to come back to this slide. So here's a visual example, kind of showing all the zones where we currently allow privately-owned recreation facilities. They're starred there in the legend. So these are the blue areas, red areas, gray, green, pink, and purple on our zoning map. And then I wanted to dig a little bit deeper into complementary uses in our RS districts. So these are the non-residential uses that we allow in our single-family residential zone, like schools and daycares, public work facilities, specifically recycling collection stations, essential public facilities and public service facilities, membership organizations, which I've already discussed, golf courses, public parks, publicly-owned rec facilities, and bus stops and shelters. And so a theme that I noticed from all of these is that these uses offer a public good or service for a very small local neighborhood scale base. Any of these that are potentially privately-owned are very limited in their use and their commercial activity, or have limitations on location, like access to a limited, or access to a minor arterial street. And so just wanted to raise this so that you could consider how a private recreation facility compares in terms of noise, traffic, light impacts that might be drawing regionally as opposed to locally for these more public goods and services. Right. So now some visual examples of private recreation facilities and single household dwellings to help you kind of visualize the impact this proposal could have on the city of Mount Lake Terrace. It was very difficult to find examples of private recreation facilities in single household zones. The closest example I could find was the Columbia Athletic Club located in Everett. It's actually not in a single-family zone, but it is adjacent, and this is kind of an aerial view so you can see the housing next to the facilities, the parking. And then this is a 360-ish degree view of that looking in towards the parking and the main building. And then this is the local street that it's accessed from with some housing. I believe those are like townhome developments. And in Mount Lake Terrace, our single household zoning districts look a little bit more like this. This is a view from 223rd Street Southwest, 225th Place Southwest. And this is sort of what it could all look like together in Mount Lake Terrace. So we have a park here on the left, a private rec facility in the center, and then a single household dwelling. So you can kind of get a sense of scale, size, impacts, what that all might look like side by side. All right. So here's some general information about parking and traffic after discussing with our traffic engineer, John Merrick. So pulling from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, there is some trip generation and parking demand information, but I want to start with some caveats. So the numbers I'm going to present are based, are estimates based on parking surveys that are conducted across the United States, and some of these are only based on two to three Some information is based on maybe eight or 10 studies, and those would be a little bit more reliable per se, but it really depends on what studies are submitted. So I just wanted to put that out there and also say that our ITE estimates can vary based on project and site-specific characteristics, like neighborhood density, number of users, the quantity of fields and courts, square footage of buildings, hours of operation, and number of days the operations take place in a week. And so these would all be different depending on site. So just keeping that in mind, this is very general. So trip generation would tell us about traffic. So for soccer, tennis courts, racket, and tennis clubs, you can see the number of trips, and that's per field or court. So if a recreation facility has more than one field or more than one court, you would multiply the daily trips by the number of courts or fields that there are. And then kind of comparing that to public high schools and churches, which we do currently allow in single household zones, so you can see the number of trips, and I just plugged in some numbers to generate this. I picked 1,300 students because that's pretty close to Mount Lake Terrace High School, and then churches just sort of picked that as an estimate. So in some cases, it may look like high schools and churches are generating more traffic, and that could be true, but it's important to remember that churches might only be open two or three days a week compared to a private recreation facility, or high school hours of operation might be 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and a private recreation facility might be operating much later into the night or on the weekends. So it's not a perfect comparison, but just something to give you some general numbers to think about, and also thinking about adding these trips to the trips that we currently have in our residential zones through things like schools and churches. All right. So parking demand, similarly, this is per field and court, the number of parking spaces that are in demand for these types of recreation uses, and then again, comparing that to similarly high school and churches as we did before, so you can kind of see how many spaces are kind of estimated for these types of uses. And again, that would be multiplied if there's more than, more than one. All right. So now I'm going to get into our comparison cities. So I added Edmonds to the list just to have a third, and again, as I mentioned last time, Linwood and also Edmonds do not allow private recreation facilities in their single household zones, but Shoreline is the only one that does allow sports clubs through a conditional use permit. And then in Mount Lake Terrace, as you know, we allow publicly-owned rec facilities, and this proposal would allow private rec facilities through a conditional use permit. I believe those are like townhome developments. And in Mount Lake Terrace, our single-household zoning districts look a little bit more like this. This is a view from 223rd Street Southwest, 225th Place Southwest. And this is sort of what it could all look like together in Mount Lake Terrace. So we have a park here on the left, a private rec facility in the center, and then a single-household dwelling. So you can kind of get a sense of scale, size, impacts, what that all might look like, side by side. Alright. So here's some general information about parking and traffic after discussing with our traffic engineer, John Merrick. So pulling from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, there is some trip generation and parking demand information, but I want to start with some caveats. So the numbers I'm going to present are based, are estimates based on parking surveys that are conducted across the United States, and some of these are only based on two to three studies. Some information is based on maybe eight or 10 studies, and those would be a little bit more reliable per se, but it really depends on what studies are submitted. So I just wanted to put that out there. And also say that our ITE estimates can vary based on project and site-specific characteristics, like neighborhood density, number of users, the quantity of fields and courts, square footage of buildings, hours of operation, and number of days the operations take place in a week. And so these would all be different depending on sites. So just keeping that in mind, this is very general. So trip generation would tell us about traffic. So for soccer, tennis courts, racket and tennis clubs, you can see the number of trips, and that's per field or court. So if a recreation facility has more than one field or more than one court, you would multiply the daily trips by the number of courts or fields that there are. And then kind of comparing that to public high schools and churches, which we do currently allow in single-household zones. So you can see the number of trips, and I just plugged in some numbers to, to generate this. I picked 1,300 students, because that's pretty close to Mount Lake Terrace High School. And then churches just sort of picked that as an estimate. So in some cases, it may look like high schools and churches are generating more traffic, and that could be true, but it's important to remember that churches might only be open two or three days a week compared to a private recreation facility, or high school hours of operation might be 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And a private recreation facility might be operating much later into the night or on the weekends. So it's, it's not a perfect comparison, but just something to give you some general numbers to think about. And also thinking about adding these trips to the trips that we currently have in our residential zones through things like schools and churches. Alright. So parking demand, similarly, this is per field and court. The number of parking spaces that are in demand for these types of recreation uses. And then again, comparing that to similarly, high school and churches, as we did before. So you can kind of see how many spaces are kind of estimated for these types of uses. And again, that would be multiplied if there's more than, more than one. Alright, so now I'm going to get into our comparison cities. So I added Edmonds to the list, just to have a third. And again, as I mentioned last time, Linwood and also Edmonds do not allow private recreation facilities in their single-household zones. But Shoreline is the only one that does allow sports clubs through a conditional use permit. And then in Mount Lake Terrace, as you know, we allow publicly-owned rec facilities, and this proposal would allow private rec facilities through a conditional use permit. So since Shoreline was the only city that did allow sports clubs through a conditional use permit, I only compared Shoreline code, or looked at Shoreline code to get an idea of what they're doing. So they have two, they're not really sports clubs, but kind of as close as you could get to the sport club use in the city. And this is the NS Arden Pool and the Meridian Park Swim Club. They were both built, actually, before the incorporation of Shoreline. So before this code existed, there aren't any newer rec facilities that have been built since they've had their code in place to allow them by conditional use permit. The NS Arden Pool is essentially a pool that can be used by residents, and it's maintained by an HOA. The Mount Lake Terrace code actually does allow swimming pools and hot tubs as an accessory use in an RS zone. So we would allow that as well. So that's not really a great comparison. But the Meridian Park Swim Club is probably the closest thing to what this proposal would allow. So here's what it looks like today. This is a street view from Google, kind of further away. You can't really tell it's there from this residential street until you zoom up and you read that tiny little sign, which says Meridian Park Swim Club. And here's an aerial view, so you can see the pool and the building. There's no parking lot. And it's actually only allowed to be used by people who live or own single-family residences on the street, adjacent, or nearby, which is approximately 30 houses. And there's actually a waitlist that can take up to five years before you can be offered a spot. So this is the closest thing that Shoreline really has. What you see here is really a small neighborhood scale sort of recreational use. But Shoreline's code does allow for, for it, so, or for something larger. So I looked into what criteria they have in their code that would help minimize the impact to single-household residences, and to see if that would help, help us understand this proposal and what impacts there would be. So, yeah, Planning Commission requested more information. And so specifically for these areas of concern, lighting, vehicle parking, bicycle parking, signs, fencing, traffic, size of facility, minimum lot size, and dimensional requirements. And what I found is that some of these things, the ones located in the left, on the left, lighting, vehicle parking, bicycle parking, and signs are covered in the code a little bit, but are definitely covered through the conditional use process. And then the remainder of them are really only covered through the conditional use process. And I'll talk a little bit more about what that means after I go through what the code does say about the ones that are covered. So first, lighting. Shoreline and Mount Lake Terrace have very similar codes when it comes to their general lighting standards, trying to protect glare, keep people on the road safe, and minimize light trespass onto neighboring properties. Shoreline outright prohibits certain types of lighting, but makes an exception for sports fields and sports clubs. And so, just, that was one place that it was called out. But I do want to say that this is not zone-specific, so an exception might not be allowed in a single-family zone, or maybe it would. That would really be determined probably through the conditional use permitting process. Vehicle parking. So Shoreline does have a recreation and cultural use category for parking, one space per 300 square feet. And then play fields would be determined by the director. Mount Lake Terrace, as I discussed last time, doesn't have a perfect fit for parking for recreation facilities. The closest we have is our public assembly area function. And that would be one space for four seats, or one space for every 50 square feet, or would be determined based on a parking study for each project that is proposed. Bicycle parking, again, we're very similar to Shoreline. They break it down into long-term and short-term bicycle parking. We, we don't do that breakdown, but we're very close to their short-term bike parking on one space for 12 vehicle spaces. And we have some language about non-conforming uses and when that would need to be brought up to code. But I did want to note that in Shoreline, the director can, of course, require additional spaces when a use or location is going to have a high volume of bicycle activity, and specifically calls out parks, play fields, and sports clubs. And then signs. We have very similar sign regulations. Shoreline is more general in saying non-residential use in our residential zones, and this is what they allow for their wall signs, which is similar to what was proposed. But they do limit the number of signs to one sign per street frontage. Alright, so going back to conditional use permits and kind of what purpose they serve and how they operate. So when a specific land use has really unique or special characteristics, the conditional use permitting process allows the reviewer, which in Mount Lake Terrace is the hearing examiner, to review that use and make sure that it fits within a neighborhood context appropriately. And the hearing examiner can impose conditions to make sure that there's compatibility with land uses in the area and within the zoning district. And so here, the hearing examiner can only approve a conditional use permit if the request conforms to all criteria or will conform with any specified conditions. So what is the hearing examiner criteria? The first is that the proposal is in accordance with the goals, policies, and land use designations of the comp plan. The second is that the proposal won't adversely impact the established character of the surrounding vicinity. And "character" means distinctive features or attributes of a building and site design, which can include building facade, scale, building modulation, tree cover, landscaping, size and location of signs, mountain location of parking, fencing, and walkability, the level of noise, vibrations, or odors, the type of vehicle traffic and traffic patterns associated with the permitted uses in the zoning district. So if the hearing examiner felt like these things needed to be regulated in order to ensure compatibility, they would have that ability to kind of dictate those things. The third criteria is that the proposed use will not endanger public health, safety, and general welfare of the community, or create obstacles to neighborhood circulation. So that's talking about traffic. The proposal complies with the purpose and requirements of the zoning district classification and general provisions of the municipal code. So in this case, it would be single-household residential. And, yeah, making sure that recreation facilities is, are in compliance with that zoning classification. And then lastly, that the proposal will be served by existing public facilities. So like making sure there's water, sewer, storm, and that all of that can be served in that location. And if not, it could be an option that the applicant would pay for the infrastructure improvements to support that use. Alright, so the Planning Commission should consider the following questions when making a decision or coming to a determination. The first question is, does the proposed text amendment to allow private recreation facilities to locate within single-household residential zones align with the comprehensive plan? If the answer is yes, then we would get into all of the criteria, sort of, that we discussed. But the first question really is, does this use align with the single-household residential zoning district? Do we want it to go to a hearing examiner to be reviewed with a conditional use permit? But yes, the first question is, is this compatible with this zone? The second question I'd ask you to consider is, can the zoning districts that currently allow private recreation facilities meet our comprehensive plan, goals, and policies that are related to recreation, economic development, and community livability? And does allowing private recreation facilities in single-household zones uphold the comp plan, goals, and policies related to land use and housing? Does the criteria that's proposed adequately address impacts to adjacent and surrounding residences? And which criteria should be codified, and which criteria is best determined through the conditional use permit process to allow consideration for site-specific conditions in neighborhood context? So if there's certain things that would apply regardless of where it's located or regardless of the project, then those things could be codified. But if there are items that would really be best catered to each specific site or project, you may want to leave some flexibility for the conditional use permitting process to work that out. So staff recommendation is to deny approval of the proposed zoning text amendment for the following reasons. Staff feels that recreation and economic development-related comprehensive plan, goals, and policies can be fulfilled in the zoning districts that currently allow private recreation facilities, and that single-household residential should be the primary land use in our urban low residential areas per the comp plan, and that the compatible uses in the zoning code are generally not commercial in nature. They generally serve that public good or service. Development policy should encourage a net increase in housing opportunities to accommodate our projected population growth by 2035. And lastly, while some of the proposed criteria is supported by staff, the majority of the criteria proposed inadequately minimizes impacts from private rec facilities on the surrounding residences, either because it's insufficient, applied too narrowly, minimizing the ability for the hearing examiner to make a determination based on compatibility with neighborhood context, or was redundant with the code requirements we currently have. So the Planning Commission options would be to, one, either determine that the proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and the zoning text proposed adequately minimizes impacts to adjacent and nearby single-household residences. And if that's the case, then Planning Commission may recommend approval to City Council. The second option would be, if you find that this is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, or the zoning text proposed is inadequate in minimizing that impact to single-household residences, then the commission may recommend denial to City Council. Alright, so next steps. After tonight's work session and discussion, we will be back for a public hearing with Planning Commission, or we could come back for an additional work session. But we will have a public hearing with Planning Commission. And then the recommendation will go to City Council for a work session, followed by a City Council public hearing. Alright, and now we have time for discussion and questions.
Looks like Isaac Harrison has his hand raised, so go ahead, Commissioner Harrison.
Oh, can you hear me? Can, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
I wasn't sure if my mic was working. Oh, well, yes, thank you. Thank you so much for that presentation. It was very informative. I had two questions, and I think the staff recommendation may have answered one of them. Does staff have any information on why our neighboring cities don't allow these sort of private recreation clubs within their jurisdictions? And then my second question, or I can, I can just move on to that one after, if you want, if you'd like to respond first.
I don't have a specific reason as to why they do not, but I noticed that, that they didn't. I think it would be for a lot of the reasons we've discussed here tonight, just being incompatible with having a primary purpose of single-household residential land uses, and land uses that are compatible with that, and wouldn't be overly an adverse impact to, to those single-household residences. But I did not discuss with planners in the cities that don't allow it for specific reasons. That's just my, what I would guess based on the research that I've done.
Thank you so much. I think I was suspecting that was the case, and why we might be an outlier for our surrounding neighborhoods, with the exception of Shoreline, except it sounds like, you know, Shoreline is the exception because it wasn't incorporated at the time when those sports facilities were created. My second question was, would you happen to have, and this, I know this is probably really hard to, or difficult information to find, but would you happen to have any information on what the current membership is for this recreational facility? And are there any sort of projections on what, you know, if this were allowed to move forward, what that membership, how that could change, like the possible increases in the amount of people signed up to, or who, you know, pay to use this facility?
To clarify, by this facility, do you mean Forest Crest Athletic Club or in Mount Lake Terrace? Or are you referring to the Shoreline example and their club?
Oh, I'm, I'm so sorry, yes, Forest Crest Athletic Club.
Okay. So I'm not sure what, how their numbers, membership numbers would change, as this proposal is for a text amendment. So although they, they are the applicant, and they will be directly impacted by the result of this proposal, we did not look into that because, yeah, this would change the development regulations. But if this did pass, they would have the ability to potentially expand their facilities, which they've indicated interest in, but I do not have specific numbers on, on what that would become.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments?
Maybe a procedural thing. There's, it looks like there might be some people signed up to talk for this. Do we have them at the end, or do we have them at the beginning typically for these work sessions?
Been so long since we've had public on a consistent basis, especially since COVID. Generally, we, you know, we have our comments, we, in our questions to direct to staff first, and then we can open it up to the public comment. You know, this isn't a public hearing, this is just a review session. And then usually, usually the comments that the public bring will sometimes raise additional questions that can be addressed to staff to answer as well.
Okay. Great. So I actually have several other questions. Sorry. Procedurally, it sounds like our two options are either to approve or deny. It sounds like we aren't necessarily taking the proposed text of this and incorporating the staff recommendations and like massaging it or whatever to form it into some other thing?
Yeah, that would be correct, and that wasn't clear at the last meeting, which I apologize. But yes, typically with like administrative decisions, if there was something that wasn't compliant with the code, we would send it back to the applicant to revise their proposal and resubmit, and then staff would review it to make sure it complies before it could be approved. So although this is not an administrative decision, thinking of it similarly, staff would not do the work to amend a proposal. We're just responding
would not do the work to amend a proposal, we're just responding to that proposal, and you're responding to that proposal.
Okay, thanks, that helps.
I would clarify, planning commission can massage this if they, if they want, if they feel like a proposal meets it on several fronts, but they want to add additional criteria to recommend additional criteria to move that forward to city council, they could do that.
Okay, sorry.
No, that's okay, as part of a text amendment, so.
And I was curious about what's currently allowed in RS zones. You mentioned swimming pools are allowed, so when I was a kid, I learned to swim from some guy who, in his backyard, built like a half of an Olympic-sized swimming pool, and like ran a swim school from that. Is that kind of thing allowed in Mount Lake Terrace? Is that, do the staff currently interpret that as allowed, or like, could you open a home-based yoga studio, or CrossFit gym in your house, or something like that? Or are those continually, currently not allowed?
So the pools that are currently allowed are allowed as an accessory use, which means the primary use, for example, like a pool in a condominium, or let's see, like a housing complex, the primary use is housing, the accessory use is the pool, and so it's currently allowed that way. But we do have code that allows home occupations, and we have a home occupation permit, but it's very limited in terms of the number of trips. You can only have up to 16 trips, which includes there and back per day. You can only have up to maybe one or two non-resident employees. You can, yeah, let's see. There's, there's criteria that limits it, so that the impact from the outside, it wouldn't appear that anything more than a group of friends or a family is gathering at a pool, for example.
Okay. Do you know how those criteria were derived? I know there were some discussions of traffic studies, and I think for traffic calming studies, we sort of assumed nine trips per day generated from a single-family home. Is that, do you happen to know if that's based in anything, or is that just kind of inherited from somewhere?
For, for trips for like, single-family and multifamily?
Why we've cut it, put a 16-generated trips-per-day threshold on home-based occupations?
Because it's just supposed to be very low impact, so it's supposed to look like, walk like, talk like a house. So, hey, I want to do piano lessons, yeah. I do home-based office and do people's taxes, but it's limited in size and scope for people coming to and from. So you're keeping the primary look and feel of a residential area, residential, and you're not opening it up to full-scale commercial uses in a residential zone. So that's fairly typical, and then you kind of go through different levels of commercial zoning, so I would say that's very traditional-based zoning. I think what you're seeing in Shoreline, and why you haven't seen those kind of community homeowner association pools for probably the last 30, 40 years, is just because the cost of land. So, you know, basically, in the 60s and 70s, you had a great deal of land that you could secure to do a multitude of phased housing development in a particular area, and one of the enticements would be, for those residents of that area, would be a community pool ran by the homeowners association, and the kids can come there and swim and play ping pong or whatever. You know, though, you'll see that, like, at some of the multifamily, Talis Wood, for instance, has a pool in a little, you know, community area, and the kids could have birthday parties there and stuff. We're just not seeing that type of development, so I think what you're seeing in like Shoreline that allows that, exactly that, where that was more commonplace back at a certain time period, right? And so, when you're looking at starting to allow for commercial uses in a residential zone, then that's where you're starting to, like Sarah has outlined, then it's all about impacts to adjacent, single-family residential use, and that's really what you're tasked with. Not looking at it only at Forest Crest, Forest Crest will be one of the things, but this is a text amendment, so this applies to single-family zones throughout the city.
Great. I think that concludes my questions. I have thoughts, but I don't want to just talk forever, so I'll pause for now.
Anybody?
Yeah. So in terms of, so this is a text amendment that's being proposed, what other avenues would there be for a proposal like this to make it through? Because, you know, I guess, I look back in the story you have about learning, that's how I learned, honestly, to play tennis, was in a, you know, small neighborhood tennis court, which is not quite what this is, but I do find it sometimes frustrating to see that as communities develop, some of our zoning blocks our ability to have the recreation facilities that people want and need. And so I'm not, I guess, I see an advantage to the community for something like this, but I also see a major disadvantage to having a blanket change to our zoning text. And so I guess, kind of talking around, and is there an ability for someone with this proposal to have a conditional use permit, or a defensible conditional use permit, where it's surrounded by, it looks like a church and a park, and then by residential homes on the other side? Which isn't, it's not like plopping a large commercial tennis court in the middle of a neighborhood. It looks like there's some single-family homes adjoining, and then on the other side, it looks like public recreation that, to me, kind of fits in the same area. And so, does our current zoning just completely block this from happening without a change to the text?
Currently, in this particular situation, it's a non-conforming use and a non-conforming structure in this single-family zone. So this is one of the avenues that the applicant has proposed to do a text amendment. But in doing so, then, you know, it's, you have to consider the probabilities of allowing this type of use in other particular areas. So, you know, you can look at, do you limit the size? Do you limit the scale? Do you put locational criteria? We saw last time where there was a recommendation by the engineer to have a collector or arterial, I believe, frontage on this, which is, some codes do that. So there's certain criteria that you can apply. I would caution that you don't get so specific that it becomes a spot zone, meaning that your text amendment can only happen in one place, or we're going to end up in court.
That's all I have right now.
About you guys, any, any questions? Not, not hearing or seeing any.
I, I had one more question, I forgot.
Yeah, go ahead.
CUPs are entirely administrative at this point, correct? Some time ago?
No, they're, they're decided by a hearing examiner. Hearing examiner is a professional land use attorney that will take a look at the criteria outlined in the, the development code that's established and make a decision. So it's not an administrative decision, it's a...
But it's also not a...
Public hearing.
Yeah, we, we don't have like a mechanism in land use approvals for public hearings currently?
It is a public hearing with a hearing examiner.
Okay, so, but it's not like, does it come then to planning commission and city council? Or is it, it's decided by the attorney at that point?
Yeah, so probably before a lot of your time, there used to be, before hearing examiners, and yes, I'm old enough to know this, there was a board of adjustment, and a board of adjustment would hear like conditional use permits and variances, and then the planning commission would hear other things. And roughly, starting about 25, 30 years ago, those process changed for variances and conditional use permits and other development proposals, that those most commonly, in pretty much all jurisdictions throughout the state of Washington and other states, go through a hearing examiner. So it's somebody professional-versed with a legal background in land use law that hears that, and of course, there's an appeal process, and, you know, and all those due process things, but that's, went kind of from a lay body to a professional at a certain point.
Oh, I, I've been around long enough to where I can... We did, we used to have a board of adjustment, and I think we still, we had it at least through the early 2010s, give or take, so.
We were kind of late to the party.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, we, we had one for a while, so. I'm glad you brought up the traffic department's recommendation about the, you know, being located on our arterial, because I know that was, that was brought up at the last meeting, and I know not everybody was here at the last meeting, so I'm glad, you know, that point was made, because if it wasn't, I was going to ask about it, so. Just double-checking, anybody else have any questions or comments? I know we spent a lot of time asking questions and asking for additional information at the last meeting, so it sounds like staff was able to provide a lot of that additional info for us, so I'm just making sure there aren't any other questions before we have, because it sounds like we do have some public signed up who want to speak, so not hearing or seeing anything from the planning commission, so why don't we go ahead and go down through the list of whoever signed up and see if they still want to speak, and if they do, we'll go through the...
Is Josh Basha still here?
Well, Kristi, if you, if we were going to have him speaking, so...
Oh, okay, and I mean, generally, we don't during a work session, so you'll have an opportunity as the applicant to present your whole, your whole application list.
I feel, I feel like, basically, the groundwork is being laid for a sense of what people want to do now with our input. And that doesn't feel fair in the flavor that I'm picking up with some, some of the criteria that's going into that.
I guess we could speak today and, and the public hearings.
Okay, Tom Anderson, please take to the microphone. You will have three minutes to speak.
And go ahead and state your name and address for the record.
Tom Anderson, 4809 238th Street, Southwest, Mount Lake Terrace. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight, and next meeting as well. Just a brief history of Forest Crest, if I may. Russ Buckland bought the property back in the 70s. At the time, when he bought it, it was a swim and tennis club, and, with three outdoor tennis courts and a pool. At that time, recreation was allowed in the residential zone. Russ had plans over three phases to cover the three outdoor tennis courts, add three more outdoor courts, and then later on, rebuild a clubhouse building, tear down the existing clubhouse building, which was built in the 60s, and add a new clubhouse building, and a couple more indoor courts. He got through the first two steps of that, and then he was busy saving money, and somewhere along the line, the city changed the zoning, where recreation was not allowed, in the middle of his plan. And so, so here we are, 30 years later, trying to allow for recreation and zoning again to complete what he'd started 30 years ago. Had Russ been aware this change was happening, if the city had notified him back then, it was probably in the mid 80s, he might have finished with his permits, finished with his application, and completed it, then he might not be here now. Over the years, various rezone proposals were submitted to the city, without any luck. With hindsight, I think we were trying to be too big, tried to do too much. Forest Crest had accumulated quite a bit of a property adjacent to the club. Russ had been for years buying up properties all around the club, single-family houses. I guess the idea was to, if he owned the property all the way around the club, then nobody could object to what he was doing. He would control the neighborhood, I suppose. But anyway, the projects that, you know, we had submitted then, or he had submitted then, included adding all this extra property, and it was too big. There was, you know, indoor soccer, more indoor tennis courts, and so we kind of failed at some of our previous rezone applications, and so we're trying to do it again, and this time, a different route, we're trying to do it with a text amendment, and it allows for the private recreational facilities with a conditional use permit. And I think the conditional use permit is important, because it allows for public hearing and conditions of approval to be placed on the application for whatever project gets submitted, whether it's ours or somebody else's. And so, whether it's sound mitigation, traffic mitigation, architectural standards to blend in with residential buildings, allows the city to limit any negative impacts that might come of any specific proposal that gets proposed. I understand the city's need to regulate land for increased housing, but Mount Lake Terrace, in your review, admitted that the recreational facilities in Mount Lake Terrace are kind of maxed out, and we'd like to help, so. And although the phrase was in our application for ability for expansion, in a way, we'd be nice maybe in the future to expand a little, but what we'll be proposing to do, if this passes, is to rebuild our clubhouse building, and rearrange our property to move our tennis courts, and to move our pickleball courts, and to add two pickleball courts. So basically, the expansion that we would be doing is just adding a couple of pickleball courts. And of course, text amendment would allow for us to expand more later, but we still own quite a bit of property, Forest Crest does in the area, and we're trying to shrink down Forest Crest to a small footprint, and it allows us to take additional land to build our single-family houses, which we've been doing.
Thank you, you have reached time.
Can I have somebody else's? I'm almost done. Okay, thanks. Anyway, so what we're trying to do is, we're just basically trying to take our facility and make it new, make it nice, make it compact, and allow for us possibly to expand for another quarter or two in the future. We want something that the community's proud of, that our members are proud of, and that fits well in with the community. And I think under the conditional use permit, that we can do that, and with the mitigations that, you know, could come under that. And the reason for trying to configure our layout, moving things around, like I said, is so we could create as many single-family home lots as possible. The goals of the comp plan are, we're calling for more housing, and we're trying to provide Yeah, the goals in the, excuse me, accommodation of projected population, and to regulate land appropriately to accommodate the population. We have been and are regulating our own land, trying to help with that. On Forest Crest own land, over the past few years, we have done the following. In 2018, we remodeled a two-bedroom, one-bath blockhouse on 48th, and built a new four-bedroom, three-bath home on the back of the lot. We were the first detached ADU that was built in Mount Lake Terrace. In 2019, we did a two-lot plat on 48th, remodeled the existing house, and built a new five-bedroom, three-bath house on the second lot that was created. In 2020, we did a five-lot plat. We tore down three of the two-bedroom, one-bath blockhouses adjacent to the club, and built five new four-bedroom, three-bath homes. In 2021, on 49th Place West, we tore down a two-bedroom, one-bath house, and built a new 3,400-square-foot home that included a 400-square-foot ADU over the garage. It was the first home in Mount Lake Terrace that sold for over a million dollars. In 2022, we did a three-lot plat. We tore down two of the two-bedroom, one-bath blockhouses, and built three four-bedroom, three-bath houses. In total, we added six net housing units, 34 net bedrooms... In total, we added six net housing units, 34 net bedrooms, $5 million in increased tax assessment, and paid around $150,000 in permit and impact fees to the city of Mount Lake Terrace, as well as spending $300,000 for 500 plus lineal feet of, things moving now, of street frontage improvements. And we are not done. We currently have application into the city for a three lot plat adjacent to the club as well, to build three more homes, and hopefully, if our text amendment would pass and we were able to re-figure our property, we have plans for another two lot plat and another three lot plat for five additional houses. So although the recreation on the club does not meet the housing goals specifically, we have taken Forest Crest property and increased the housing in the city. So I know the two are not really related, but I think we've been a good, a good member of the community and done some good things. And like I said, we're not, we're not done yet. And then finally, some thoughts about the club. With Forest Crest, with all these applications to whether it was the rezone or the text amendment now, it's not about money. We could tear down the club, we could tear down the tennis courts, tear down the additional clubhouse building we have, and create about 12 additional building lots. And in total, we could, I mean, I could make a million dollars, the Buckland family could make $5 million, and you know, we'd be done. But it's not about that. We're about providing recreation, and we think it's, it's a good thing for the community. We have tennis programs for kids, tennis programs for seniors, and although we are a private club, we're not Harbor Square, we're not the Seattle Athletic Club, we're more of a blue collar club that fits in well in Mount Lake Terrace. And if this text amendment doesn't go through, we're still going to be there, and we'll still keep fighting, and we'll patch and, and paint and kind of just live within the non-conforming legal status that we are, and then we'll try again. But I would hope that under the conditional use permit process, that we can somehow find a way to let us do what we want to do, and that's serve our community. And I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you. See you in a couple of weeks.
That's not all I need. I'm Gerald Buckland. I was 14 years old when my dad bought that property, and we went out there as a family and converted and built that club. And in our family, it is something we take pride in, although our dad didn't have the funding and different things to keep it as nice as we all would have liked. We are now next generation of owners, and we're putting in place the funding to do this with this home construction's benefits, what Tom talked about, so that we're able to make it a nice club, not a bigger club. We're shrinking our land in doing this, so that we're not going to proliferate into some big monstrosity in the neighborhood. Our neighbors all get along with us, we don't have traffic complaints, we don't have lighting complaints, noise complaints, we don't have problems with our neighbors, and we've been there 50 years. We get along, we're not going to get bigger. And what we're going to get is nicer, and zoning in other areas that where these uses are permitted are a drive away. Kids can come, take lessons, they don't have to be members, they can come take lessons at our facility from the neighborhood, they can learn to play tennis from a very impressive pro that we have, has a golden ball, means he's won national events. We have good instruction, we're good for the neighborhood, in our, in our view, and I think we're a better suited location for this, because we're centrally in the residential neighborhood, as opposed to off in a commercial place where parents have to drive their kids. Kids in the summer can take lessons there, they can walk there from their homes. We have many Mount Lake Terrace residents that are members. We're not an outside organization camping in your, in your city. That's it for me.
Anybody else on the sign up sheet?
There is no one left to comment.
Oh, there was no sign up sheet.
Oh.
There was the other address, but nothing for.
My apologies, then. Can we get your name and address, please?
Ian Buckland, 4809 238th Street Southwest. I just wanted to comment, they pretty much said a lot of what I had to say. We are a small family run business, so to speak, in Mount Lake Terrace. My dad built it in 75, took over a defunct Boys and Girls Club and made something of it. We currently have, we cap our membership at about 140 members. Sometimes it gets up to 150, but not very much. We're not looking to expand the membership, we're just looking to make it nicer. We don't want to be a nicer to anybody, we want to be a nice, clean facility, and to do that, we need your permission, basically. So that's pretty much it.
My name is, sorry, my name is Anita Marrero, my address is 6020 Championship Circle, Mucko Teo. Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Anita, and I'm a city planner by profession. I've been a Forest Crest member since 2021, and I'm here in support of the zoning text amendment to allow private recreational facilities in the RS zones via conditional use permit. I just have a couple bullet items I wanted to run by you, just to give you an idea of why this text amendment should go forward. For one, there are no other private tennis clubs in the city, so this is a very important resource that we have in Mount Lake Terrace. Public courts are limited, especially when schools are in session. The Recreation Parks and Open Space Plan states the need for recreational opportunities. The application found that there was no detrimental irreversible environmental impact per the DNS, the SEPA review. Although this would apply to all residential zoning districts, like the planning director said, this, the likelihood of a new private recreational facility being built in the city in the residential zone is highly unlikely, as you saw from the maps, oops, there's about four sites, and a couple of those are limited by critical areas, and then also there's a publicly owned park that would not allow this as well. Also, as according to the other map, there are single family lots that could be combined, but financial impacts of that is, is very, very unlikely that that would happen. I concur with the minimum criteria standards to reduce potential impacts to residential properties provided by the staff report of Mount Lake Terrace staff dated November 13th. I do feel that this meets the comprehensive plan policies regarding recreation, and I encourage the planning commission to recommend approval to city council. I really do appreciate Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Morgan's comments on if this isn't the way to go, if there's any ideas that we could have this club move forward, like Ian, one of the owners said. We're not, they're not looking to expand per se, it's just making it a nicer club. You know, I played there for a while, and it's, it's a place to socialize and exercise, but it is old, and so the facilities are really old, so if you've ever been in there, go in the bathrooms, like you can, you just need to like take a tour of the building, it's, it's very, very old. But as a member of SE, I see the multiple benefits of this recreational facility. The tennis club serves all ages, including kids, adults, and seniors. Communities are always looking for more recreational opportunities, and to deny the expansion of this club would be detrimental to the community. And I just want to also say that the applicants were advised to go this route for, to do a zoning text amendment. So just some other ideas, if this doesn't work, possibly with a comprehensive plan update, 2024, maybe rezoning the properties, the areas around that area to allow this, and then maybe doing a text code amendment to the non-conforming code. But I also like Commissioner Morgan's idea on maybe changing the criteria, so it's not a rezone specific or a parcel specific, but it would allow this type of improvement, and then you wouldn't have to worry about this happening in, in other areas of a single family zones.
Is there anybody else who didn't sign up, would like to speak? All right, not hearing or seeing anything, so looks like unless staff has anything else, that's it for this agenda item for tonight?
Staff would just be looking for direction on how the planning commissioners would like to move forward.
Oh, in terms of, do we need another work session, or do you think we're ready to have a public hearing?
Or, yeah, or if any other, any other recommendations, so. Or all theirs.
Just, just before, I, just kind of a clarification question, just seeing, you know, kind of how, how this process works, so we, we either make a recommendation or not to the city council, city council still has their processes, but where in, so then, after city council does their process, does that when it goes to the hearing examiner?
No, so I mean, this is for the text amendment, so this is just to change the code. If the Forest Crest would like to proceed with their development, that's when they would go through a conditional use permitting process. So this is laying the groundwork for that to happen. So this is looking at the zoning text amendment only.
Okay.
So again, we're not looking just at Forest Crest, we're looking at a zoning text amendment that would allow private recreational facilities in single family residential zones.
So we have a public hearing, then, whatever the outcome of that public hearing is, then it goes to the hearing examiner?
No, it goes to the city council.
City council, okay.
For a work session first, and then a public hearing.
Okay.
At a later date, if the, when the applicant wants to move forward with their development, they would go through, if this was approved, a conditional use permitting process with the hearing examiner.
Okay.
Based on the criteria that's established through this process.
All right, so.
I have one other question.
Yeah.
I guess, just to, trying to keep some ideas running around. So changing the text, the amendment, or proposing the amendment to change the text is there, because right now, the conditional use permit would require them to maintain the same zoning that exists today?
They're, they're not allowed to do this use.
Yeah.
Per the existing zoning. So there's under, under right today, this is considered a non-conforming use in a zone that it doesn't allow. So they're grandfathered in, so they can keep this use as it is in perpetuity until at such time this use wasn't in place for a year, and then it would lose its status as a non-conforming use and structure. So this text amendment would allow this type of use in single family residential zones through a, through a conditional use permitting process. So that's what we're looking at, is a private recreational facility, should it be allowed as a conditional use in a single family zone? And if so, based on the criteria that's proposed, is that the criteria that the planning commission would like to move forward as a recommendation? You don't have to make that decision tonight, there's a public hearing at your next meeting, but if you would like to change any, anything that you have before you and would like direct staff to do additional whatever it is, then we would ask for direction this evening.
So where, where I was going with that is, so you guys did a great job bringing information about neighboring cities. Is there anything that those cities allow for in conditional use permitting that affects or that would address grandfathered properties and grandfathered use without having to change text in the zoning?
No, so grandfather, grandfathered use, non-conforming uses are, we're very, we're pretty much consistent with everybody, which means that in a, a code, you always recognize the uses that are there before the code changes, right? So just because the code changes and it doesn't allow you to have a, a house in a zone, for instance, it gets rezoned to commercial town center, for example. You can't build a single family residence in town center right now. But we're not going to tell everybody to demo their single family house in town center. So they're, they're non-conforming structures, and they'll retain that as long as they're used as a single family residence, right? But at such point that that gets redeveloped, then they need to conform with the code. So you always want to keep your, the intent of your non-conforming code is to make sure that over time, you're changing those uses to be consistent with your zoning. So this, this is in place in perpetuity. It's once you start revising or changing your non-conforming status, then there's limitations on how much you can change that. And, and that's the case with Forest Crest, that they want to do some different things down the road, and they're limited because it's a non-conforming use and structure. So instead of changing non-conforming throughout the whole code, I would recommend you don't do that. There's a reason why it exists, and the consideration before you is, do you want to allow this use in single family residential zones as a conditional use permit? And if so, what criteria do you want to put in place for a hearing examiner to consider this type of use in a single family zone?
And I'm sorry.
So the applicant outlined in the previous staff report what they're proposing, and staff commented on that as well. So that would be something good to relook at as far as planning commission goes, and if you wanted to propose to change that criteria or add to it with your recommendation at the public hearing, that's something you could consider. You don't need to, but.
I'm going to be absent next meeting. Is there opportunity to discuss now, or should I submit some kind of written statement?
Well, if we're moving forward with a, with a public hearing in two weeks, I, staff would ask that you tell us what you would like to see coming back, because we would need to start preparing those materials for you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right, yeah. I, I guess, you know, just thoughts on this at the moment. I think sort of the trend of planning in general and kind of how we're looking at as a city is to increase flexibility in our zones in general, to give people, like, you know, this will be part of the comprehensive plan process, but with things like ADUs and possibly missing middle, like, things like accessory commercial units and home-based occupations, I think are something that we would be looking at a little bit more closely as part of an economic vitality component. So I think the proposal in, like, as a general concept, doesn't necessarily contradict what happens, what we think of as the scale of a single family residential zone. You know, if you have things like home-based occupations, if you have things like, you know, somebody running a yoga studio out of their garage, or a, you know, a, you know, like a pool in their backyard where they have a swim school or something like that. And there's opportunity also to make these things sort of like a third place or a neighborhood focus, if it's like scaled and directed to the neighborhood. One of the things that sort of gives me pause about this particular, the particular way that this amendment is written, is that it's almost backwards in a way. Like, instead of setting maximums, it sets minimums. It sets a minimum size of the lot, it sets a minimum for parking, it sets a minimum, so like, it's not really looking. It sets a minimum, so like, it's not really looking at the spectrum of like, you know, somebody operating a yoga studio in the garage and then goes big and then how big do you want to go? It's like the other way around. Like it starts off very big. And so I think if we were going to massage it a little bit further in the future, like we'd probably want to flip it around and, you know, look at that. But that might actually be too much, like, changing if we don't, like, that's kind of a lot of work, right? Like, you know, is it better to just kind of reject it outright and then if somebody proposes it again, like maybe they look at it from that direction? So that's kind of my own thoughts on this. And I'll probably submit this in written comment next week, but yeah, I was glad to hear everyone's questions and comments.
Okay. Anybody else? Any questions, comments? Okay, so it sounds like staff's looking for kind of direction if we think that, do we want another work session or if we're just ready to move to a public hearing for the next meeting?
How much can, where can we work on this?
Yeah, I, I mean, yeah, there's not much, you know, there's not much we can do on our end, especially, you know, heeding the advice if you, you know, if you, if you tweak it too much and you make it too specific, it's a spot zone. And, and to me honestly, you know, this, this request looks like, you know, trying to, you know, it's trying to be a workaround from being a spot zone to begin with. So.
Yeah, and for my, for my thoughts, like, you know, looking at this is, you know, from the other direction, like, you know, can we allow like very small scale, like recreational uses in residential zones? Like this isn't written at that at all. That probably needs some more study and stuff like that. So like, it's almost like you have to look at it in a different way.
Yeah, so again, if the planning commission feels that, you know, there, there isn't anything more to be gained, you know, by having another work session and, you know, the next step would be a, a public hearing, then we can go that route. Or if I'm hearing from you guys that you would like to have another work session, then we could have another work session, but then we'd have to be really specific with, you know, what additional information we're looking for staff to provide us.
And how does that impact our schedule for everything else?
We would just schedule per your wishes. So I mean, we have a tentative planning commission schedule and we have a tentative council schedule, right? So it's at your discretion how you would like to move forward.
Yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't necessarily impact anything else that's on maybe future agenda items because it would just add to that item. It wouldn't, it wouldn't cut anything, it would just.
Would it be a longer?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Which, which used to be the norm, so.
Yeah, I know, I know we've got a lot of work coming up. So like, you know, if we did want to spend a lot of time kind of looking at this more deeply, it, it sounds like we're maybe willing to spend extra time here if we need to, then.
Well, that's the question right now, is, how does the rest of the planning commission feel? Either you're ready for the public hearing or you would like to have another work session. I guess I need to hear from everybody else, what their, what their opinion is or.
I mean, I think we're ready for a public hearing.
Okay.
No more work session.
Okay.
Public hearing.
Public hearing?
Public hearing also.
Okay, I'm public hearing as well, so we're unanimous. Oh, thank you. I apologize, Commissioner Harrison. I even was looking at you earlier to see if your hand was raised or not, so I apologize. But yeah, it sounds like it is, the planning commission thinks we're just ready to move forward to the public hearing then.
Okay, well then we'll have it on the agenda for a public hearing at your December?
11th.
11th, planning commission hearing.
Okay.
Meeting, sorry.
And I just wanted to make sure, since my eyes were off the screen a little bit. Commissioner Harrison, did you have any questions or any kind of follow-up? Or are you good?
Oh, I'm good. I think everyone brought up any question I would have had, so yeah, thank you.
Excellent, great, thank you. Okay, so then we'll go ahead and move on to item number seven, director's report.
All right, thank you. Just a few items, this Friday evening at 6:00 PM in the city hall plaza, right outside here, is the 40th Annual Tree Lighting Event. Wanted to remind everybody if they would like to come and join the festivities and watch the tree lighting occur, hot cocoa, Santa Claus, all the, all the trimmings will be available for that evening. My understanding is, is that 58th will be, start to be closed down about 5:00 PM that evening to make way for that to occur. A couple of staff items, planning staff is preparing a work program for 2024 as we speak. So we're doing a general work plan and then also doing a work plan for planning commission, which will come before the planning commission and then that will be presented to city council by you all. But staff takes a first crack at it and then you guys have an opportunity to comment on it as well. Just some of the major things that are, were, being worked on, as you know, is the major comp plan amendment that needs to be adopted by the end of this year. We have a missing middle housing grant that is going to need to be worked on this year and adopted by July of '25. And we have some building and fire code changes that are being proposed. The Washington State Building Code Council, it has a tentative date of pushing through some changes in March. I don't believe that's going to happen, we'll see, but we have some other changes that are going to be proposed just in how we operate fire services for the fire marshal services here at the city. And then we'll wait to see whatever the state does. I think that that's going to be more work than what's happened so far for a March adoption by any stretch. And then we'll have other items on that work program as well. We have some internal things that we're working on, a full software update for permitting and some other things that have been ongoing as well. So there's plenty of things for you all to be doing this next year and we appreciate your help in helping solve those things. We did, staff felt like we had a pretty successful open house for Vision 2044. We estimate that we had about 50 to 60 people total come through the doors for that event. And we all got to talk to quite a few people, some, some folks that looked familiar and happy to report, some folks that had come for the first time to a city event and had input and comment on different things and were newer to the city and wanted to be involved. So that's pretty cool. A lot of young families moving here and want to be engaged in what's happening as well. And then we're still getting online comments as well from that proposal. That's all on the city's website. So for the folks that couldn't come in person, we're trying to make everything available online so we can have full participation and outreach and continuing to get our messaging out for the comp plan update. Other than that, we have a whole host of things we're working on, trying to get the usual stuff before the end of the year through city council and such. So we're kind of working on those things and juggling around the holidays. So it's typically very busy time as we're trying to close out and keep things moving forward. We'll be doing an update to council on where we're at on the comp plan. We're going to have next week another comp plan advisory group meeting as well and trying to think, you, you guys will be seeing the engineering development manual come your way, I believe, at your just next December, your first December meeting as well. That document is in the last dot in the i's and cross in the t's, had a meeting on it today. So you guys will be looking at that again to move forward. And then the tree ordinance is going through its adoption process as well. So that's kind of update on some major things. Any questions for staff or myself? Comments, concerns?
Just a quick question when it comes to the, you know, the gathering of the comments for the open house. Since it's still open online, when will that data sort of be aggregated so we can get a sense of?
So as part of the scoping for the environmental review, all of that will be put together. It's required to be put together, so you'll, you'll see that. I, the December date escapes me, but we have that open for 30 days for comments to come in. And so that's sometime in December that folks will have an opportunity to comment specifically on that. So the work on the draft environmental impact statement can start, but then there'll be comments throughout. I believe that the first part of December, that initial survey is getting closed out. We kind of kept it open a little bit longer just because we're trying to get that messaging out to communities that we typically don't reach. So there's a concerted effort to be reaching people that we don't normally hear from, to have them fully participate and give, try to give as many people opportunities to, to comment. So we'll have an accounting of what we've heard so far on that as well. So that's kind of where we are. We also are working on getting information together for economic development, planning as well and market analysis. And so that work is going on in the background, getting that information together. And so you folks will be seeing that as well and so, and so will the comp plan advisory group, so.
I'm assuming it's the consultants that are pulling together all the comments.
Consultants with staff, with staff oversight and help too. And I, there's a December date where that's going to be presented as well. So that work is getting put together as we speak, so.
I'm trying to get a little sneak peek behind the curtain. I'm just curious, since we did that additional outreach with additional translations that we maybe hadn't done in the past, have we seen some return on that? Maybe successful outreach to those communities?
Yes, we have. Yeah, and we're also trying to do some additional work with folks that do that work specifically, that it's not just, you know, it's always difficult to try to just say, hey, and then have people start to participate, particularly people that aren't normally part, feel included in part of that process. So we're also working with people that work in that field, that have more professional expertise of how we, how we go about doing that more effectively. And I am hopeful that we can be reaching more folks that we typically don't. So we, we've had a, a little bit of that and we're also really trying to outreach internally into the schools where we're trying to reach parents and students and other folks as well. So I think collectively the efforts will pay off beyond the normal, hey, come to the open house. I mean, the open house is important and, you know, that's all good, but then the other steps that we can take to kind of go above and beyond what we typically do, so.
And I'll add, I did get some feedback, at least one person who attended the open house was pleasantly surprised to see the childcare. So I know we talked about a lot about that last week too, that, you know, how that was a new thing. So they said, they had brought their kid along thinking that, what were they going to do to keep the kid occupied and not bored out of their mind? And the fact that there was an opportunity to sort of have the kid be preoccupied with something else was.
Yeah, I think it's, it's nice, you know, because we're coming to people at dinnertime and just trying to provide more opportunities where there's some food involved and there's also childcare. Although I talked to some pretty with it younger people, grade schoolers that were really engaged, which was pretty cool. But, you know, just to have that option, particularly if you have some younger kids that are, you know, maybe not really thrilled that mom, dad or grandma is like dragging them around for an hour talking about stuff, but, so we're going to try to add that to our repertoire too, just to make sure that we're trying to hit those notes.
Great. And is that it for director's report then?
Yep, that's all from me.
All right, so moving on to item number eight, miscellaneous business by call of planning commissioners. Does anybody have any miscellaneous business?
I might be late to the next meeting. I'm going to be over at the police office. I'm doing some training. I just learned that it goes till eight. I thought I was going to go till seven. So on December 11th, if you're still here at eight o'clock, I'll pop over. They're taking it, they're doing a, this self-defense class there.
Oh, okay. And then Commissioner Betcher, you said you would be?
Absent, and I think we approved my excused absence last meeting, so just reminding everyone of that.
It's good to know that you'll be late because you may miss the public hearing. We have to have at least a quorum of four, so that's.
Also, sorry I was, sorry I was late today.
No, no worries, no worries.
I also, I'll be attending, thanks to Commissioner Morgan for filling in for me for the last couple of city hall or the, sorry, like several iterations of this ago, the comprehensive plan advisory group. Do you have any thoughts or things you'd like to share that I, you observed?
So I mean, I was sick on the second one. I caught COVID for first time this year, which is crazy. So I, I missed the, the second one. The first one was great. I think we did a couple, a small workshop. For me, as kind of a newer commissioner, it was great to hear from the community members and their input into the workshop. Didn't take any notes, nothing that I noted that needed to come back to commission, other than just some of the feedback that I think went back to the planning department.
Great.
December meeting, the CPGS is going to start getting into land use. And so kind of start getting into land use and housing and those issues, which are pretty detailed and in-depth, so.
Which, what date in December is that?
It is December 6th.
December 6th.
That's why we have Shannon here, so she can tell you the date. It's that first week of December-ish, yeah, next week, which is Wednesday evening. And I believe we made the meeting a little bit longer.
Yes, there were concerns that there wasn't enough time to speak among everybody, so they were recommending potentially going a half an hour longer, I believe.
So FYI.
I was at the last meeting, so since we're kind of curious, you know, what happened. So they worked on, wouldn't say a full workshop, but, you know, talked about the sub-areas a little bit, you know, they had some maps and was surprised to see how, I won't say 100% consensus, but they, you know, the discussions that we had previously when we were trying to decide what, you know, what sub-area plans we wanted to address first and, you know, kind of our concerns and where we thought we could put more, more dense housing, you know, kind of replacing the older apartment stock. It was interesting that that was almost echoed by the, by the, the committee members as well, or, you know, the openness to that. I was, I was surprised to see the openness to, you know, the, you know, the ideas that we talk about all the time, but not, you know, we don't always hear back from the public or, you know, maybe there isn't consensus, you know, out in the general public with, you know, some of those, those thoughts and plans of, you know, how development trends are, or how, how we're going to have to look in the future to, you know, meet these goals. And so it was, it was kind of surprising to see that they, you know, weren't, I wouldn't say 100% on the same page, but they were kind of in that same direction. So it was, it was, it was really interesting in how they were split up into different groups, but yet each group was coming up with the same, same comments, so. Okay, so anybody else with any miscellaneous business? Not hearing your Sydney? Just double checking online, Commissioner Harrison, anything?
Nothing for me.
Okay, great. So with that. Okay, great, so with that, we'll go ahead and declare this meeting adjourned, thank you very much, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.